Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the December 1st, 2022 Columbia County Planning Commission meeting to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us to our invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all would by with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for yet another beautiful day, wonderful time of the year that we celebrate the coming of our Lord. We ask that you look over us this evening, guide us, give us wisdom. We ask that you look over our first responders, our law enforcement that take care of our community every day. We ask that you look over our armed forces overseas that protect this country, keep it safe. We ask that you give everyone here that came to watch tonight and participate a safe ride home from this meeting. All these things, in Jesus's name we ask. Amen.
Pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America, to the Republic, one nation, under God.
Thank you very much. And if I could ask you to please silence your cell phones during the meeting tonight. We do have all five commissioners present tonight, or excuse me, four commissioners. We got a call in sick from Commissioner Caraway. He's home with the flu, so if you'd keep him and your thoughts and prayers, I'd appreciate it. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes of the previous meeting from November 17th. If there are no amendments to that set of minutes, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Passes 4-0. Gentlemen, you've also had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. If there are no additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes 4-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on December 20th, 2022, in these same chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Christian, and she will provide you with a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this meeting. If you want to add something, either for or against one of the items on our public hearing agenda, please raise your right hand, or right hand, raise your hand. Been around too many lawyers. And we'll ask you to come forward to the dais and give us your opinion for or against in three to five minutes. We have another opportunity. If you have something you'd like to get on the record for the Commissioners to either read or hear between this meeting and their meeting, and it involves anything that's not on our public hearing agenda, if you have another item you'd like to address, again, please raise your hand, come forward, and take three to five minutes to give us whatever you'd like us to hear. That being said, let's move right into things tonight. We've got a sign review. Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a review of the permanent signage for Piedmont Prompt Care currently under construction at 1331 Apling Harlem Road. This is part of the Greenpoint planned unit development, and one of the conditions from that rezoning was that the location for all permanent signs be approved by the Planning Commission. This is the location of the property on the east side of Apling Harlem Road, and this is the existing gas station just to the south. And the proposed signage includes one freestanding sign shown here. It is a monument style with the stone base, similar to what's been used on the gas station and the Greenpoint Community marker signs. The sign is located on kind of the corner of the property, next to the access drive that is shared with the gas station, and it meets all of the size and height requirements for the county code. There are also two wall signs proposed. These are both channel letter signs. They go on the two sides of the building, one here and then one on this side. These are, again, in line with county code and also with the draft Greenpoint Master Sign Plan that staff has reviewed. That does need review yet by Planning Commission. Once that is done, then the individual commercial businesses will not require additional review. But until that time, we are running these through Planning Commission for approval, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the signs for Piedmont Prompt Care at 1331 Apling Harlem Road.
Second. All right, motion been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes 4-0. Ms. Mystery, architectural review for hut and self-storage.
Yes, sir. This is an architectural review for hut and self-storage on 216 South Bel Air Road, on 4.77 acres, and the current zoning is S1 Special, and their request is to comply with a rezoning condition. Here is the parcel to the east of South Bel Air, just north of Walmart. The zoning is S1, and here's the aerial. It is undeveloped site at the moment. The approved development plan shows the climate control buildings here, and the rest are not. This was the rendering that was given with the 2018 rezoning to S1, and it had brick and stucco on that. This is site plan that's under review, and there are air conditioning units on the side of the building there, and that will require screening with the landscaping. These are the elevations of the main building that fronts Bel Air Road, and it does have brick and stucco on the front and the two sides. The rear is allowed metal. These are rendering of the proposed building, and a close-up of the elevations of Building A, and also of the entrance, just show the detail for the brick, the stucco, and the metal canopies. This is an example of a building that they have built somewhere else, and these are the typical elevations. So the zoning condition did require all the elevations for approval. The non-climate controlled are allowed metal, and that's what they have shown here, and examples of completed projects as well. Staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for hut and self-storage at 16 South Bel Air Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Approved. Passes 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, preliminary plat for Clarenbridge.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for three lots in the Canterbury Farms subdivision off Chamblin Road. This property is split zoned. As you can see, there's a portion that is part of the Canterbury Farms pud, and then the bulk of the property is RA, which is residential agricultural. The preliminary plat includes three lots, two large residential lots on the RA portion of the property, and then a basically open space lot that's going to be dedicated to the HOA. This plat requires review, since it does include extension of Clarenbridge Lane into the cul-de-sac, so it is an extension of the public right-of-way, as well as some waterline extensions. So since there's some public road and utility extensions with this minor plat, it does require a Planning Commission review and approval. This does meet the lot size requirements for RA. The lots are minimum of 4.65 acres, which does exceed the two-and-a-half acre requirement, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for three lots in Clarenbridge, located in Canterbury Farms off Chamblin Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Approved. Passes 4-0. Mr. Douglas, File RZ 221201, conditional use for massage.
Yes, sir. This is a lot at 444 Fury's Ferry Road. It's about a .4 acre lot that is already in operation as a hair and nail salon, and the applicant is just applying for their conditional use for massage. This slide shows the location, again, just west of Fury's Ferry Road, near the intersection of Baston Road. The zoning is already P1, and like I said, they are already in operation as a hair and nail salon, which is an allowed use per the P1 professional zoning. This is the aerial of the location, and the location's plat as well. It's the section on the left, the .41 acre Lot A section of that plat. This is a picture of the existing site, and then this is the future development or future vision 2035 map for Columbia County. Highlighted in blue is Fury's Ferry Road, because although the lot falls in the neighborhoods, the yellow neighborhoods character area of the future development map, it is along Fury's Ferry Road, which is an activity center corridor, which allows for commercial uses, professional office uses per, you know, zoning found in our commercial and professional zonings to include P1 professional. And the addition, the massage license that's being applied for is for one singular private room and one singular massage therapist to operate at that location, which would not create a noticeable strain, traffic strain, on the surrounding neighborhood residential areas, both in this Wexford Drive area just south of the location and the surrounding greater Fury's Ferry location as well. For those reasons, staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? All right, thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Is there's anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation? Okay. Ma'am, can I get you to come forward and give us your name and home address? Because we record these, and I don't think that we can understand what you're saying there.
I'm the massage therapist.
And your home address, please. Your home address, please.
1471 Clary Cut Road, Harlem.
Thank you.
There was a massage therapist there before. It was zoned for her. She left when COVID hit, and because it had been, no one in that room for 12 months, they told me I needed to go and, I've been a massage therapist in Columbia County. I think 2007. I'd have to go back.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve File RZ 22-1201, conditional use for massage at 444 Fury's Ferry Road.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Passes 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, File RZ 221202, rezoning from RA to S1.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to S1 Special at 6297 Cobham Road. This is the location of the property on the north side of Cobham Road, near the intersection with Mistletoe Road. It is currently zoned RA, as are the surrounding properties. However, I do want to note, these properties here, although they are zoned RA, are actually owned by the county and are in use for a fire station, a community center, and a Wi-Fi pavilion, so not exactly RA uses on those three properties. You can see near the intersection with Mistletoe Road, we have properties zoned S1 for two churches, as well as some additional commercial zoning. This is the aerial of the site, shows the existing buildings well to the rear of the property. This would be the existing barn and existing house, and this is a photo of the existing site from the road, as well as photos of the existing buildings. This would be the existing house and pavilion and the existing barn. Now, the applicant's proposal is to develop a couple different uses on this property. The first phase is already in progress. The house is being used as a vacation home for the applicants, as well as a short-term rental, about 10 to 14 days per month. They're planning to continue working on the barn to develop it into a small event venue that would host art and pottery classes, gardening workshops, micro weddings, parties, and other events with no more than 50 people per event. Just under 1,200 square feet of the barn would be used for this purpose. It is quite a large building. The rest of it would be used for agricultural uses, and they are intending to plant gardens and such on the property, and then they would use the, you know, barn for, as part of that portion of the business as well. They would also then, in future phases, develop the produce stand at the front of the property. We do have a condition that this would meet typical RA setbacks, so it would be set back off the road a little bit, under the trees. The applicants have confirmed that this is their vision. They do want it set back kind of among the existing trees and to be very low impact. The narrative states that it would be about 200 to 400 square foot building with just some gravel parking, fencing, and landscaping around it to provide for sales of the produce and the flowers that they're planning to grow on the property. Future phases also include construction of a greenhouse and additional gardens, as well as, in very future phases, the four tiny homes near the pond. Those would all be intended to be used as short-term kind of vacation rentals, and they are intended to be stick-built on the property. And these are some example photos of the applicant's ideas, so converting the barn, providing outdoor patio space near it, the greenhouse event space, and then the small produce stand up near the front of the property. These are some additional example photos, the cottage ideas. These would be those stick-built tiny homes, very small cottages. Typically, these are going to serve one to two people at a time, and then the barn and event space as well. In terms of the future land use map, this is in the rural character area. This area is intended for preservation of the existing rural character, with large lot residential and agricultural uses being the dominant development pattern. This is a fairly low-density use still. We are talking about five potential residences on this property, but it is 18 and a half acres. The minimum lot size in RA is two and a half acres. With an access easement from the road, they could subdivide this into five lots, which could potentially allow for up to 10 houses. We do allow ancillary dwellings in RA, so they could have a principal and a secondary on each of those hypothetical five lots for up to 10 houses. So we are looking at five residences here. That is in line with the low-density character allowed in this area. In terms of the other proposed uses, we do have the small produce stand. That's a logical extension of the agricultural uses allowed here, and in this location, we do have the commercial and community uses right here along Cobham Road adjacent to them, so that is a logical kind of extension of this area of Cobham Road to allow the small commercial use. In terms of the event venue, the main concern is going to be impacts on adjacent residential properties. In this instance, that is primarily the properties to the east of the site, and the applicant has included on their site plan a buffer around the entire property. That is a 40-foot buffer. That is typically what we would require for industrial uses, which are obviously much more intense than an event venue or residential use. We do have a condition that would require these buffers to be in place and to be verified by the county landscape architect before any events happened on this property. It also does help that the barn is on the opposite side of the property from these residences, so the event venue itself is quite, quite a ways away from those adjacent residences. This adjacent property is owned by the church and is not a residential parcel per se, and as I said, these ones up at the front are owned by the county and also not in residential use. Overall, staff does feel that this use is appropriate in this rural area and is recommending approval with several conditions. The first, just clarifying that uses allowed in RA are also to be allowed on this property, clarifying that the produce stand shall meet the typical setbacks for the zoning district, for the RA zoning district. That condition regarding the 40-foot buffers being planted and approved by the landscape architect prior to operation of the event venue. And then in regards to the tiny homes, we do have county code requirements regarding tiny house communities, as well as standards for setting up tiny homes and mobile homes. Not all of those are necessary to apply to this property due to just kind of the location and the layout, but we did want to clarify that there are certain things that are required under that code. Each tiny house has to have water supply and method of sewage disposal approved by the county health department. Each tiny home has to have suitable electrical power, and each one has to have a trash container that will be collected and disposed of regularly, and at least two parking spaces for each of the tiny homes, and that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
Danielle, I think if they have more than four of these tiny homes, they'd have to come back.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions?
Has it already been approved with the refuse that they've written on there?
I'm sorry.
They're saying 30 gallons of refuse per tiny home. Has that already been dealt with with the health department?
So the county code already requires trash cans for every mobile home or tiny home, so that's just basically pulling from county code. Now, county code technically requires two. I did modify the condition a little bit to just require one, since we're talking short-term use in small houses. I felt one was sufficient per tiny home, but the conditions have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, so it's not been finally approved yet.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Anything you'd like to come forward and add? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address. Sterling was in a position to cover you. I couldn't see you over there.
My name is Robert Canty. I live at 7624 Winfield Hills Road, Apling. And it's just a question, because I own some property, and I had talked to the county before about putting a couple houses on my other 10 acres, and I was told that you have to have a road coming through there, or you're only allowed to put two on a, on property. So I'm wondering, haven't they put four on an area this small with one egress, one way in and one way out?
I'm going to toss this to either Mr. Sterling or Mr. Butler.
I can actually address that, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Montgomery.
So the, in this case, because it's essentially being converted to a commercial use, they're going to have to widen the driveway to meet fire code, and they're going to have to run a fire line back to these properties. So this is basically because they're rezoning at 2S1, they're requesting permission to do the additional tiny homes. For a typical residential property, you're correct, we only allow two houses per parcel, and they have to be stick-built.
All right, that's all. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Accept a motion to approve with conditions, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, File RZ 221202, rezoning from RA to S1 at 6297 Cobham Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion fails. 2-2. Ms. Montgomery, File RZ 221203. We have been asked to postpone this until January the 5th, and I, since it has been advertised, we're going to go ahead, and if anybody wants to make public comments, we'll go ahead and accept those, but we do not have a final rendition of what they're going to propose, so what you see tonight may actually be totally different than what is proposed. That being said, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning off Horizon South Parkway from RA Residential Agricultural to PUD Planned Unit Development. This is the location of the property on kind of the southwest side of Horizon South Parkway, and currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. Surrounding zoning includes the Mill Branch Planned Unit Development to the north. That is a mix of residential and commercial uses, as well as C2 for Walmart and the surrounding development. To the southeast, you have the M2, the general industrial for John Deere and the related industrial projects down there. This is the existing site. It is undeveloped, and this is the concept plan submitted at this point. This shows just kind of conceptual uses for the property and the major road layouts. This county parkway is, was approved as part of the SPOST, which includes some funding for this project. The final design of that road, however, is not in place at this time. It is going to be a county project, and we are not to the point of having the final route and design on that road, so it may or may not be in the location currently shown on this plan. The uses proposed are single-family residential in the, well, not that area, these two areas, townhouse residential in this one, and then some industrial uses and commercial uses. So it is a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial. There are several aspects of the narrative that need further refinement, including the development standards, architectural requirements, street sections, amenity phasing, and some other items not provided or needing revision. Traffic engineering also indicated that they cannot make a complete review due to lack of information in the rezoning application and lack of knowledge of the framework for the proposed development agreement related to this county project. At this time, therefore, staff does not consider the application ready for thorough review, and we are recommending postponing this application. This property is in the Gateway Activity Center. This is an employment center on the future land use map. It is intended to provide for offices, restaurants, retail, hotels, civic uses, as well as higher-density residential uses. So in general, the uses are in line with this activity center, but as stated, the application is not complete enough at this time to have a thorough review, and staff is therefore recommending postponing this application.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? I do have one. Is there any conversation with the Grove Town about annexing this property?
We have been in communication with Grove Town regarding any comments or questions or concerns they may have regarding the application, but we haven't certainly offered any perspective on whether to annexation. So by the fact they've applied to us, I would gather that means they're coming through with a development for the county.
I didn't, I didn't know if, if submitting something that wasn't as complete as it probably should be if they were working another angle.
If they are, that's something I'm not aware of.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against? Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Hello. My name is Aisha Manus. I live at 1455 Sawmill Trail. So I live in that -
Spell your first and last name.
Oh, A-I-S-H-A-M-A-N-U-S.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So I live actually in the Sawmill Trail. You can see it on the map. It's in Mill Branch.
Draw on that screen.
Oh, I can. I live right, right there, like literally right there. That was pretty good. I'm definitely voting against this, because, one, I'm disappointed in the fact that I just voted for the SPOST thing, because I love the idea that you guys were wanting to build some roads to deal with the congestion that we deal with over on Horizon and Williamview, and how it's just a Charlie Fox trot. And then if you go down to the other end of Wrightsboro and Chamblin, it's also terrible there. So having this was like, oh, this is going to be awesome. And then like, as soon as that comes out, now there's a dude who's coming in trying to build 543 homes and all those businesses. That is so much going on, and we already have so bad of traffic in that area. It's just going to add to the congestion. Plus, there's the part where I'm thinking, I know Columbia County is striving to get 20% of green space, and we are just giving away all this beautiful land where I know that there's an entire thing of coyotes that live out there, because I hear them all the time by my house, the deer. We're losing a lot of like animal habitat, and what's going to happen? They're going to end up on the roads, getting hit by all the cars. We're already starting to see that with the deers. And it kind of bothers me again that my tax dollars are going to help pay the $13 million road construction for some company to come in and use that road. Like, why aren't they paying footing the bill to, it, I'm not very eloquent here, but like, it really frustrates me that we're trying to deal with the horrible overpopulation and congestion in Grove Town, and someone wants to come in and build more homes in tiny, compact things and just add more and more people, more and more traffic, and it's not really making me want to stick around kind of things, becoming too congested, so.
What, come in. What do you think would ultimately happen to that property?
I mean, I would get it if maybe you guys broke it. If you did ultimately have to give it to homes, maybe larger units, like the one-acre things, like, it's just, that's a lot of units in such a space, and there's
I agree with you with that, but, you know, the people that own the property now have a privilege to market their property to other person.
And I, and I get that.
I don't like the traffic anymore.
Ultimately, they're going to want to do what's going to make them the most money, which is probably going to sell to the guy who's going to make hundreds of homes, but I personally wish that they'd either keep it as it is or donate it to the county for green space, because, you know.
No, you're talking about millions of dollars that belongs to a family. The property's been let down through generations, and if it was yours, you wouldn't consider donating to Columbia County for five minutes.
I don't know. I'm the kind of person who would, because I want to see spaces for people to grow up with and not just be turning into little really condensed areas. We're losing our green spaces. We really are. And I mean, yeah, I can tell the name of the thing, something is Branch, and I live in Mill Branch, and there's the other Mill Branch. Clearly, this is all owned by somebody in the Branch family. I mean, kind of obvious.
Be the Carter family.
What?
Be the Carter family.
Oh, I just, it's one of those things of like, I just, I think, bad idea.
How long would it take to develop this, start to finish? 10 years? Eight years?
That would be pretty optimistic, I think, you know, depending on the economy and depending on, you know, demand, but certainly it would be at least five to 10.
And probably the C2 would go first. Is it kind of depends on who they've got on the hook?
It really does depend. I mean, access into the site is, you know, going to be the first thing. You're going to have to develop it from an existing road network. You're going to have to develop it from an existing road network. So there's going to be some of that that will play into what gets developed and where it gets developed.
So I know, I know when, let's say we want to go out and redo a highway out here, we're going to be eight to 10 years. When you're building, and that's existing, when you're, when you're building something from scratch like this, how much more difficult or easy is it to put in the network?
Well, there's several factors that play into that, of course. One is acquisition of the, whatever the alignment that we need, the right of way to do that.
Right.
Then there's the environmental aspects of going through all of the various, you know, in this case here, you've got
Got wetlands.
Obvious wetlands and things of that. You're going to have to work within the constraints of. And then you're going to have to generate a design. And then, once all that happens, go out for bids and, you know, construction commences thereafter. It's not a short process and it'll be, you know, a couple year process for sure, at, at the least a couple of years, not longer.
Is that an accurate depiction of the wetlands?
It gets most of it. I don't think that's entirely where all of them are. I think there's, you know, certainly some, you know, this creek here, so there's got to be a little additional. So this is a graphical representation, but it is not a 100% boots on the ground depiction of what is existing. And I think that's part of why staff is certainly recommending postponement at this time to get a little better handle on what's going on with that.
Do we have any idea of the, the type? Because I see units. Do we have any idea, are these going to be all detached or are we going to have some, some townhomes? Or what, what do you think the mix is going to be by the time it's all said and done?
I think, Daniel.
So the RD1 and RD2 are going to be single-family detached. The RD3 is their townhouse section.
Ma'am, to clarify something to you.
Yes.
I've been in Columbia County all my life. Been a lot, a lot of places that were developed. I never dreamed I'd live long enough to see happen. And I understand your concerns. Believe me, I do. And when I moved on Lewisville Road in Napling, it was the country. And now I can hardly get out of my driveway. However, I do believe that people have free option when they own property to attempt to sell it to the highest bidder if they choose to sell it for their families. And that's all I was trying to point out.
No, I understand. I did have one other thing. Are we going to be building another high school anytime soon? Because this many homes, even at 20% of having high school kids, Grove Town High School is already building things and they can never hold the capacity.
A question for Board, Board of Ed?
There is no space for the children. Grove Town Elementary, which they would be zoned for.
That's a question for the Board of Education. We have nothing at all to do with them. I wish we did.
So this is really not preplanned very well. It's not.
Ma'am, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir.
I'm Ray Hitt. My wife and I live on Milton Hitt Road off Chamberlain Road. And I agree with the lady here. My whole family does. But in the mornings, we cannot get out from Milton Hitt Road onto Chamberlain Road unless somebody will, kind person will let us out. You can't get out. I mean, what, what are you going to do when you've got 500 or 600 more cars on Chamberlain Road? And 500 or 600 more on Lewiston Road? How are you going to operate? That's, you know, that's all I got to say. I mean, I, I've been around development my whole life and I know, I know what it's like. It's just, it's, to me, it needs a lot more planning to be done before you pull the trigger on it.
I totally agree with that.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
Russell Baker, 20 Corley Circle. These are my people.
You've got to do radio ads for people, that voice.
Say that again?
You've got to voice radio ads for people, that voice.
I'm just here for the calls. We're part of that Mill Branch community that they keep talking about. And we're the only community that's going to be directly affected by these plans. Now, we were already instructed that the art development, they want to start as early as mid 23. All right. And our reservations should be, you know, this panel's reservation. We already talked about the ecological, environmental. We didn't talk about like there's little lakes and tributaries that run, you know, a butt to our actual community. What's going to happen to all the wildlife? Talked about the schools, you know, what about the, the schools are already, as far as Grove Town, already at capacity. And then from reading this submission, there's a lot of things that haven't actually been worked out as far as the Army Corps Engineers, what they're going to do in regards to these wetlands. What's the setback conditions going to be? The what buildings? What commercial buildings? Because now it's not an agricultural, all right? It's turned into an agricultural, I mean, residential and commercial. So what kind of commercial businesses are we talking about bringing into this area? So we already know about the traffic. Now you're introducing noise and other construction, you know, for the next, you know, 10 years in the area that's already, you know, congested. So our concern, you know, addressing this board here is, you know, what is our relief? You know, who's going to ensure that once all of this stuff takes place, you know, that, that we're going to be protected? People that's currently paying taxes, that's currently residing in these areas. I understand the need to make a profit if necessary, but, you know, we feel that certain things could be put into place previously before we even get to the proposal stage. Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting, but to begin with, staff put these people off because they weren't prepared like you're saying.
I read exactly what they wrote and I agree 100%.
They wouldn't let them come tonight because they're not ready. People that work for you.
Right.
And they're not going to let them come until they get much, much more prepared where we can answer your question. I couldn't answer honestly your questions because we haven't got enough information. That's the reason we didn't let them come tonight. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no. I mean, that's good to hear. And like I said, now that we know that this project is on, like I said, we would never have heard about this project if we didn't learn first of all, the approval of the road that was being built. And just like they have already wrote, everything is contingent upon that road. All of these construction projects and all of this is basically, you know, a, a product of our taxpayer money paying for this road.
And it's.
So it's kind of like we're paying for our own demand.
And as slow as SPOST moves, it could be five, six years before that road's even on.
I don't think it's, like I said, we don't know. If you told me all of this was going to take place five years from now, I wouldn't be concerned.
Have you seen how slow they are on Lewiston Road in 221?
Well, like I said, I've seen different variations of the road, put it that way. All right. So it's just like me looking at Grove Town. How many times Grove Town Road has been done over? Okay, to get the same results.
We got nothing to do with Grove Town.
Okay, I'm just using that as an example. All right.
That's their own ball of wax.
So our concern is basically, we want to be involved in the process because, like I said, we're directly connected to that community. Any development, any change, you know, like, like I said, we would like to be somehow in the loop because, like I said, it affects us directly. There's no other housing complex that's all for this plan activity. All right. So if they want to go ahead and make money and sell, that's their obligation, that's their right. But like I said, they have the responsibility to the people that's, you know, that's been there for the last 15, 20 years.
Thank you, sir.
Because originally, it was all set up to be agriculture.
All right. With that, I'm going to ask you to yield the microphone, please.
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against? Sir, you've already been up once. We only let people come up one time a meeting. No, sir. You've already been once. Anybody else who would like to speak either for or against? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove or to postpone. I guess my question is, January 5th long enough? I know that's what they've requested in staff's opinion. Is that the right date?
We, we hope so. That's all I can tell you.
Do you want to stay for one of those?
What was that?
Push it longer.
I wouldn't at this point. It's one that we can, January 5th could work, but we'll have to wait and see with some of it.
Okay. All right. So then we need a motion to approve, to disapprove or to postpone until January 5th?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ 2212-03 rezoning from RA to PUD, January 2nd.
5th? January 5th.
I'm sorry, January 5th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Postponed until January 5th, approves 5 or passes 5-0?
4-0.
4-0.
4-0.
Only four of you.
Four, I'm sorry.
Mike's here in spirit.
Yeah, he's here in spirit. I feel him. All right, Ms. Mystery, file RZ 221204, PDD to P1.
Yes, sir. This is located at 425 Furious Ferry Road on .768 acres. Current zoning is PDD Planned Development District and the request is for P1 Professional. Here is the location on the east side of Furious Ferry Road. And this is the zoning. It is P, there's several different zonings in the area. There's C1, commercial, C2, P1 across the street, some S1s and several subdivisions as well.
Excuse me, if I could ask you to please withhold conversations like this during the meeting? Thank you.
This is the Corridor Protection Overlay District on Furious Ferry Road. And here's the aerial of the, the property. There was a little discrepancy on the, on the plat because Furious Ferry Road was widened in about 2002. But there, there wasn't a, the widening wasn't recorded on the plat for this property. So we had to just work with the tax commissioner to get that sorted out. Here are the site photographs of the, the building. There is a companion variance, which is the next application for this. The applicant would like to keep the existing building and use that for a real estate office and do some site and building upgrades for that as well. Here is the plat of the property. And a little bit on the zoning history, in 2002, there was a request for zoning from R3 to CC, Community Commercial, and that was actually disapproved. And instead, the parcel was rezoned to P1 Professional. And two years later, in 2004, there's a rezoning from P1 to PDD for a conditional use for a restaurant, which was approved, but that project did not go ahead. This property is along the Furious Ferry Corridor, which is a professional corridor on a future land use plan that does allow professional uses and some C1 CC uses depending on the site. And staff is recommending approval of that with conditions from the Health Department. The building must be connected to county sewer. And planning as, and as-built and survey combination plat will be required prior to site plan approval. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes. Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name's Marlene Douglas. My home address, 1544 Clary Road in Lincolnon, Georgia. We do currently have this property under contract purchased from the seller. The zoning, I think, is in compliance with other things in the county overlay. So I, I don't think this is as much of a concern. What we're planning to do to upgrade this building, I think, would be welcome. We've, we've jokingly said it's definitely by no means the best looking building on Furious Ferry. With no disrespect to the current owner, it may be one of the ugliest on Furious Ferry, so we're hoping to get the opportunity to upgrade it. But a lot of that would depend on the, the variance more than the zoning. PDD or, or the, the new zoning would work. It was recommended by the county actually that this new zoning would just be a little bit better fitting for the surrounding area and with our purposes.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 221204 rezoning from PDD to P1 at 425 Furious Ferry Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve, passes 4-0. Ms. Mystery, we've got a companion variance, file VA 22-12-02.
Yes, sir. This is for the same property and it's a variance 290-98. List some law structure requirements for the building. Again, this is the location and the zoning. This is the aerial of the building, the plat, and the site photographs. And you can see that the, the building is quite forward on Furious Ferry Road there. And this aerial shows the yellow lines. So the setbacks are required from the center line of Furious Ferry Road is 125 and from Bowler Road is 55 feet. And you can see where the building is into the setback there. And the applicant wishes to reuse the existing building and do the upgrades. If they, if this variance was not approved, they would have to actually demolish that building or make parts, demolish parts of it and then rebuild what they want. Just looking at the context around there, this is the building adjacent to it. It's quite a modern style building and the applicant does wish to do something that's compatible with, with the newer buildings in the area. This, just for example, this was just further up the road on the intersection of Furious Ferry and Vaughn Road. This was a pharmacy building. And the architect and developer did a good job of upgrades on that and make a more modern, modern design. And staff is recommending approval for the variance with the same conditions as the zoning to keep everything together so that they can reuse existing building.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Ma'am, is there anything you'd like to add? Please come forward. Give us again.
Marlene Douglas, 1544 Clary Road, Lincolnon, Georgia. The variance is most important to our potential purposes for this property because as I mentioned, it being too close to the, the street, we would either have to cut off the first 25 foot of the building or scrape the lot completely. And that would just make it not feasible for us. For whatever reason, this building's been empty for almost two decades now. It's been used primarily for storage by the current owner. And for whatever reason, he hasn't been willing to work with too many other purchasers. But he has been more than gracious to, to work with us on the potential purchase of the property. If we can't leave the building as it is, it would be not feasible for me to continue with the project. From a vision viewpoint, the next door neighbor at 3505 Professional Parkway, Mike that owns this building is very supportive of us moving in next door. I spoke with him again today. He has no issues with the location of the building as far as even blocking line of sight to his building, which is a good thing. I mean, he's in support of, of us being next door. Also, the architect that did do the project down the road with Rite Aid, I'm already in communication with him to help us bring this building from 1952 into 2022, which I think would be great. Like I said, that, that would only be possible if we can work with the existing building as it is for now and not have to demolish.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA 221202, variances to reduce the setbacks at 425 Furious Ferry Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve, passes 4-0. We have no text amendments or additional items? We have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
We do have one more public hearing.
What? Where?
The very bottom one.
I'm six.
B6.
I'm, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself again here. Okay, so we got file VA 221201?
Yes, sir.
I marked both these off. It's Wheeler Road. Okay, got it.
This is a request for variances to sections 90-98 list of lot and structure requirements and 90-139 buffers and screening at 4155 Wheeler Road. This property is located on the west side of Wheeler Road, near the intersection with Flowing Wells Road and is currently zoned M1 light industrial. You'll see the property immediately to the south is zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial. That is relevant because that requires a buffer on the M1 property against that C1 parcel. Property to the north is zoned M1, so there's no buffer required there. Property to the back is zoned R2, Single Family Residential. The zoning filed for this property in 1986 addressed to the buffer against the R2 parcel, required a 20-foot buffer. That does appear to be there, as you can see on the aerial right here at the back of the property. This is a existing industrial property. It is currently in use as an automotive repair shop. And this is the. It is currently in use as an automotive repair shop, and this is the existing site. The variances are in regards to the location of the existing building. It would typically be required to be... Sorry, lost my place.
I know how you feel.
Typically, it should be 90 feet from the center line of Wheeler Road. It is approximately 75 feet from the center line of the road in its current location. Similarly, it should be at least 30 feet from the side property line, and is currently closer to 5 feet from that side property line. This is also the side that would require the buffer. It is adjacent to the C1 property over here. Obviously, with the building location, it is not possible to actually put the, the required 40-foot structural buffer in, in that location. There's some other issues with the existing site. There is this existing gravel parking lot at the front of the property. This does need to get addressed, either paved as a formal paved parking lot, potentially fenced as an outdoor storage area with a solid fence along Wheeler Road to kind of hide the outdoor storage, or these vehicles need to get moved behind the existing fence into the existing outdoor storage yard at the rear of the property. The applicant has not indicated which of these three options he's intending to pursue at this time, but that will have to get addressed before the approval of the business license. This shows the existing fence on the site. Now for outdoor storage, these areas are supposed to be screened. That does typically include a solid fence and landscaping. We are requesting that this fence be made solid. We do have a condition speaking to that that would allow either slats or fabric on the chain-link fence. This is not in a design overlay, so we're not really looking at design standards here so much as we are just trying to screen the view of this outdoor storage area. So we do have a condition speaking to where we would require that solid fencing, as you can see in the yellow. This would screen the view from Wheeler Road and from the adjacent C1 property. Again, this property to the north is zoned industrial, so we're less concerned about that side of the property since it is a similar zoning district. The applicant is also working towards a submission of a landscaping plan for the property. This property has been vacant without an active business license for over 12 months, so he does have to upgrade the entire site. He has been working through that process, getting the septic system inspected for the Health Department's requirements, as well as working on getting the water utilities conditions handled. We do still need the landscape plan, and the Wheeler Road construction is still ongoing with the Flowing Wells project, so that may have a associated agreed-to timeline for installation, but we do need some middle of that plan as well. The staff is recommending approval of the variances with the conditions that the variances apply only to the existing buildings. If those buildings are demolished or require reconstruction or repair exceeding 75% of the value of the structures, that the buildings must be relocated to meet the setback requirements and the required buffers installed on the site. And second, that the outdoor storage area at the rear of the property must be fully screened from view by a solid fence on the east and south sides of the storage area, and that this fence may be chain-linked with slats or fabric. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
You mentioned that they wouldn't have a business license issued without a plan, so they have to be a firm plan in process, completion, or just a plan submitted with no timeline?
So it has to be submitted with an agreed-to timeline. So it has to be submitted to our landscape architect, reviewed and approved, and have a definite timeline for when it will be installed.
Okay. And that's, that's not just the landscape, but the, the lot as well?
Right. So depending on, on which option he chooses for this front parking area, if he chooses to move the U-Haul trailers to the existing fenced storage area, so to move them back on the site, so if you can see, currently, they're parked up here, but the existing fence line is here, so he could relocate them back into the fenced storage area.
And then, but you know.
That doesn't then require any improvements beyond the landscaping. He could choose to pave that parking so that it meets county code, or he could choose to essentially expand the outdoor storage area. We have allowed gravel in outdoor storage areas, provided that it's screened and landscaped appropriately. So the landscaping plan would play into that as well.
So there's, there's ultimately a way to get this looking better?
There is.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 22... Variance is to reduce setbacks and buffers at 4155 Wheeler Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 4-0. Now, we have no text amendments. No additional items have been added since the last time I announced it. No legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I saw a couple of people with "I voted" stickers on their, on their lapel. Please take the time to, to vote either tomorrow or on Tuesday for the candidate of your choice. Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir? If you, yes, sir, if you'll come up and, and have a good attitude about it.
First, I, I guess I want to go on record.
Give, give us your name and home address.
Name is Robert Canty. Still live at 7624 Winfield Hills Road.
Part of the process.
Yes, sir. I would, I just want to go on record as saying that I disagree with the rule that says you can only speak one time about different items.
Well, yes, sir, it's my meeting. We go by Robert's Rules of Order, and that's the way we run the meeting.
But the, the lady got there, she got to speak on the rezoning for number four, and then you let her speak on the variance for number five, which is two different things again.
Two different items.
Two different items. That's what I wanted to do. I wanted to speak on two different items.
Thought you wanted to come up on the same item when you raised your hand.
No, sir.
Sorry, that's my problem. I apologize for the mistake.
Okay, can I tell you what I wanted to say, ma'am?
Absolutely. Please do.
Okay. Our county government are stewards of this county, right? And we were talking about the one where they wanted to build on that 200 and something acres there. And I guess it was just a question of why? A lot of people don't want that to happen. I, I understand the, the people that own it have a right, I'm a landowner, have a right to sell it and make a profit, and that's, I don't disagree with that. I guess my question or comment would be, would the county consider buying that property and using it as a green space or a park or something that, that would leave it intact the way it is?
That's a, that's a question for the commissioners, because we, we all, we are as a recommending body here. We, they're the ones that could take that under consideration and actually budget for that. So what, what district do you live in?
I think it's three now.
Okay.
Winfield, it was four.